Okay.
Okay, next, we're gonna elect our new resident council that's gonna be starting up a little bit, I think. I feel like I'm on American Idol or something. Thank you. Our new resident council that's gonna begin on June 1st, but first, I'd like to thank our retiring outgoing members. If you're here, can you stand up?
Some are missing. So we have...
Okay, so we have Cheryl Reeves and we have Maxine.
And we have Gloria and we have Albert Sakowitz.
Okay. All right, well, thank you so much. It's been a pleasure working with you on the resident council. We did originally put out a notice that we were gonna be voting on bylaw amendments. We're actually gonna hold off on that vote because we're gonna have a separate meeting to discuss some further revisions to those bylaws. So, you know, more to come. And so, but now, we wanna elect our new council, so our new council consists, and if you're here, if you could stand up, Helen Barber, Marilyn Condesenti, Harriet DeGraff, Karen Green, Linda McElroy, Jim Smith, and Kate Storms.
Kate Storms is away.
Oh, she's away. Okay, so Kate's not here. The rest of our new committee is here and we just need a vote, so all in favor, can we say aye, raise your hand?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Okay. So, congratulations, new council. All right, Ashley wanted to talk, a couple reminders on transportation.
Hi, everyone. So, I just had, we had a meeting with the drivers and I just told them that I would come back with some points, just of some policies and things that we have for transportation as a friendly reminder. So, transportation, our request forms for appointments should be submitted two days, business days, prior to the appointment. So, a few examples, if you are looking for an appointment on Monday, the date to submit would be the previous Wednesday. Tuesday would be the previous Thursday, Wednesday the previous Friday, and so on and so forth. We don't have transportation on Thursdays. When signing up or putting a request in for transportation, when signing up for a trip, please don't forget to mention if you have a walker or a wheelchair, because we have to make sure that we have room for everybody and everyone's accessibility items on board. So, the other point was, I know that the resident cash checking is going away, June 1st. So, with that, I just wanted to give a reminder that there are transportation to banking every Thursday and that will go from Gilderlin Library all the way down to Stuyvesant. So, if you have any questions on specific banks that are in that vicinity, there's a lot. So, I'd be surprised if you don't have a bank in that vicinity. I did list them, but it's, if you just come and see me, I don't wanna list off a bunch of banks. So, for the recurring shopping trips especially, but then, of course, for any appointments or trips, I write the meeting time for us to meet in the main lobby. So, that's the time that, you know, we wanna start getting ready to board and things like that. So, if you could be down to the lobby about 10 minutes prior to that meeting time, just to make sure, you know, we work out all those kinks, so when it's time to leave, we're not figuring out, we don't have room or some situation like that. It just makes for a more smooth event and transport, so, and making sure everything's on time. So, it's very important, especially on the weekends, that you are down by 2 o'clock typically for those weekend concerts. And that was it.
Okay.
No claps for me. Just kidding.
Round of applause for that. So, yeah, it did come up at our, we just had a quarterly drivers' meeting and it's, so mostly on weekends, it's usually Kevin and Tom who are the nicest people in the world and never wanna leave anybody behind. But it gets to a point, you know, I guess at one show, they missed the pre-event or whatever that was because of, you know, waiting for people to get there, so we just have to be considerate of everybody and the people that show up on time. So, that's why we decided, we let them know, you know, we would put out these reminders, 'cause then it puts them in an awkward situation, 'cause usually nobody else is here, so they make the call to leave and just, no, it's not their fault. So, just please pay attention to the departure times. So, I did wanna give some renovation updates. There should be a sign, if you've seen them, but they're gonna be spraying the popcorn ceiling on the ramp, right? South ramp near the dining room. So, they're gonna prep at 5:00 and then they're not gonna actually start the work until 8:00 tonight. So, once they start at 8:00 though, you will not have access to that hallway on the ramp. So, we did ask them to do that one in the evening, because obviously, a lot of people use that walk area. Artwork was delivered. We're gonna need to order a few more pieces. We were kinda waiting to see where everything was, but we're definitely gonna need some stuff to fill in. Common area bathrooms are currently being done, various things in each bathroom, but they're finishing up that project. The library signs have arrived, so we'll be installing them on the shelf. I think right now, we have some lovely tape there to indicate the genre of the books, so those will be in place. Also, in the, in the library, so we did have a sign up that said, "No food and drink." However, we are going to, typically, it'll be no food and drink, but we designed it purposely, so it would be a flow within that lobby. So, if we need that space when we have a large event in the lobby, sometimes those wine and cheese events are very big, very crowded in there. We will use that space for those types of events and that's the way it was designed, with a sliding door, so we could open it up as need be. Any questions on that? Okay. The old PRN space, we're converting to a technology center, so the computers and the desks will be moved out of the clubroom and placed in that space, so that'll be the technology center, instead of the computers being in the clubroom. Also, when Cory is here, that's where Cory's gonna be based out of as well, because if she needs, you know, something she can show you on a computer, the computers will be there. We're just waiting, it's been carpeted, so it needs painting, so that'll be happening, you know, relatively soon. Shove, yep?
I did not hear where the computer room will be now.
So, it's pretty much around the corner. So, the one in the clubroom now is gonna go where PRN was occupying that space, right around the corner. 'Cause PRN is now, the therapy space is now up here.
Right.
Yes. Shuffleboard courtyard and putting green is gonna be done. We needed to, we had vendors last spring and they're no longer responding to us, so finding new vendors and starting over, but we do have plans to get the shuffleboard court resurfaced and the putting green redone as well.
This year.
I'm hoping. I'm hoping we get it done as, the question was this year. Hoping to get it done as soon as possible. Then, we are also going to be renovating the front desk area, so that one will be, not a lot of changes, but just kinda making that workspace a little bit more efficient for everybody behind there. And we're also gonna be carpeting in the lobby. So, a lot of these things have been add-ons to the renovation project. When we started this, I don't know, two and a half, three years ago, so even the planning started probably three years ago, the carpeting in the lobby was brand new. So, as we've gone through this whole thing, it's getting a little bit worn, so we decided to add some carpeting on there. We've also added some work at the terrace as well and doing some refresh in that location. However, the big major work is done. The dining room tables are in, the chairs are in, I think they look nice. Color scheme looked nice. So, there's been some debate about our trees, the panels around the dining room. So, some varied opinions, we're actually, haven't made any decisions yet. We're gonna have them, I thought we kinda finalized it the other day, but now that I saw all the tables in there, I'm thinking, oh, it's much more crowded than it looked the other day, so let's rethink the panels. So, we haven't made any decisions, but I'm certainly taking all the feedback in and we will let you know as soon as we decide. Yes?
Why does it have to be that crowded? It seems to me, we had a beautiful open space to be putting all the furniture in and we were able to accommodate everybody. And I see a problem with trying to get unique people in there, or the waiters and waitresses trying to get around those tables.
So, the question is, if you couldn't hear, about, why is it so crowded? There is, we actually are not using two of the tables they even sent us, we don't need, we've decided, well, we're thinking, we haven't decided, it just came yesterday, so trying to reassess it. So, we did add more rounds than we had before, than squares, so we did add some more. Right now, if we had every table they gave us, we would've increased seating a little bit, but with taking the two away, we'll be about the same where we were before any of this started. But the squares are actually a little bit bigger and the rounds are bigger than we previously had in there. And we ordered more of the rounds, because there seemed to be more of a demand for sometimes the bigger tables. Yeah? Yes?
Have we made concessions about the plants, given the milk benefits of greenery?
So, the plants have been dispersed around. We do have some that are in the dining room now, but the plants that we took out of that space have been dispersed around Beverwick.
So, they're not gonna be put back?
There's some in the dining room. I think, once we make final decisions about those panels, where they're gonna be put up and where the plants are, there's some in there now, there's some in the private dining room in the south as well, so, you know, we repotted them, they are the same plants. Yes?
Can you tell us when we'll be able to bring guests to the dining room?
So, guests, June 19th. June 19th, yes, all guests, all dinner. So, in the past, we haven't done guests on the patio, because there's been a high demand for that. I was just talking to Matt this morning, I'm thinking, let's try it and see what happens. And if we are finding that residents are missing out on that experience, 'cause we have too many visitors on the patio, then we'll relook at it, but I figured, let's try it and see what happens. So, June 19th, guests all around. Also, June 19th will be the day they're targeting to start outside dinner as well, 'cause right now, it's open for lunch. Yeah. Any other questions on renovations? All right, it's coming along, it's been a long process. We are gonna have, on the 18th, on June 18th, we're scheduling a party to celebrate the almost completion of renovation. It'll almost be a fabulous party. So, yeah, June 18th, we're gonna have a little bit, a little bit of a celebration to thank you all for your patience as we went through this process and we continue to go through it. But, yeah, the big stuff is done and it'll be just finishing up, doing walkthroughs and things they have to touch up on. I do appreciate people's comments, if they see something that isn't right, because then we use that as part of their punch list on things they have to complete before they have to leave, so keep those coming as well. Some other, some other updates, so Spectrum, we've had some issues in the past couple of weeks. As far as I know, so, the first problem was the cut cable was repaired, so people were getting that hardwired internet, can now have that back, or now is working properly. We also had some issues with pixelation, as far as I know, that's been resolved for all but two residents and one, two residents in the cottage and one here in the main building. And then, the in-house channel equipment was fixed, but we still have, like, a few residents.
Just the DVD is the only issue.
Oh, okay, just the DVD. All right. So, again, cable seems to be working for the moment, so we'll go with that for a win for today. Maintenance update, yeah, no. Don't check your watch. So, maintenance updates, we are, we're moving forward with the fobs. They've been doing the wiring at the door, of course, they ran into some unexpected problems. So, the fobs will be at the three main entrances, you will not need a key anymore, you will have a fob to just wave at the door and that will let you in. The fob is programmable to each individual, each apartment or cottage. We've ordered enough, so each apartment or each cottage will have two fobs, so that'll be the plan. The good thing about it is if somebody leaves, we can just erase that program from the computer, so we don't have to worry about fobs being out there for somebody who no longer lives here. Same with the staff, so the staff can use their badges and they can swipe that at the doors and get in, but when a staff leaves, we just wipe their badge out of the system, so they can't get in either.
Will the fobs work for all three?
The three main ones, so the main one in the north, south, and west. That's where the fobs will work. Yes?
So, we will have, we're gonna be adding something to our key right now.
Correct.
We'll still need the other to get into the, like, the room we're typically going, so now, we're gonna add a fob.
Correct. So, the question was, we will be adding, you will still need a key for the other entrances that are not the main ones. Yes?
Will they change the locks on the residences to accept the fob?
So, the question was, will they change the locks? I'm assuming individual apartments or cottages? No, now at this point, we won't, it'll just be for those main doors. It'd be a lot of wiring getting to each apartment, this is for just wiring the one doors. Plans for the future, that would be great, just having fobs for the apartments as well. Yes?
I've observed, when we've tried to bring, like, groceries in, it's very difficult to keep those heavy doors open and get your cart through there. And we're probably some of the youngest people here, so it's a challenge for me, it has to be a super challenge for some of my older friends. Isn't there some way that those doors can be set, so that when you open them, they stay open for the 15 seconds it takes to get the cart open?
Yeah, it's not on, so the question is about coming in with packages or carts or whatever, you got a handful coming in that door, it doesn't really stay open, there's no delayed, delayed time closing on the door. But while they're looking at it, I guess we can have them look at the same thing, it'd be the same company who would do that.
I think it would be, I would appreciate it.
There are two doors, yep. Yep.
So, one's gonna open and the other one not open. So, that door, you're gonna need a key to unlock it.
No, no. Okay, so there's two doors coming in to get into the vestibule, you don't need a key, it's open.
Okay.
Yep. Yes?
The second one you're saying about the doors, groceries, if you have a cart or walker, it's almost impossible to get in there. And often times, the drivers will come on a wheelchair, but that's not their job.
Yeah, the comment is, it's almost impossible to get in with a cart or walker through those doors. Okay? Okay? Yes?
Is it possible to get a cart instead of a wagon, a wagon cart, I don't know what you call it, that you have in the supermarket? You have one in the south and one in the north, but we could use one over here and there's a space for it, right inside the door, that wouldn't interfere, it's under the stairs. Is it possible to get another one, because the other ones, you have to go all the way down and it's not heavy enough for certain things? So, you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, but what, what location are you thinking?
Right here, next to the, exit next to the pool.
Okay.
They were donated, we can try, but they can't go under the stairs.
We can look and see what's out there. So, if you couldn't hear, it was about additional carts, like we have in the, further north and south. Yes, near the pool and transfer.
Well, I have another cart suggestion. I think what Cynthia said is right, but for shopping carts, you have to go into the door with difficulty on that side entrance and then you have to go through another door to get the cart, if you have groceries. Why can't the carts be stored underneath the stairs to begin with, so you don't have to go through two doors?
So, I, you know what I'm saying? Yes, yes.
And that's true, people with walkers.
Think if you're coming in the north, you're in the stairwell.
In the vestibule.
If there is, there's plenty of space.
Yeah, 'cause it's inside the second door. Yeah.
So, people with wheelchairs, walkers, carts.
Well, I never leave my wheelchair, so I mean, well, my walker.
We can look at that and see if there's a better place, placement for them, that would be more convenient. Okay?
And the fobs would be handy at those side doors as well.
Yes. Yeah. Yes.
I think you may need more carts as well, people are always borrowing much of the salad.
Okay, we can do that, looking at more carts. All right. I know we did, we had our paver person that was in, we're still waiting on their quote, they're gonna be looking at paving, actually putting lines, repainting some of the lines on some of the parking lots. We did one half of the south and then you can't see anything else on the other half of the south. In the, actually, really in the main and in the north, and actually, the terrace and the nursing home, they all need lines, you can't see the lines anymore. So, he's giving us a quote for that and also looked at cottage driveways and any resealing or surfacing that they may need. The erosion study that we talked about, near the nature trail, we did, I met with the engineers that put together the proposal. They said that there was a vendor lined up and the vendor didn't know who we were. So, now, we've gone back to the engineer to say, "We need a vendor." So, all the plans have been approved by the town, they have been for quite some time. The plans are all approved, but now, we just have to find a vendor to do the work. My understanding is that whatever material we can, that we have to remove from that hillside, we can place in another spot on campus, so it's not having to go very far, it just has to come off the hillside. So, hopefully, that helps, but we're just waiting on a vendor to do the work now. Yes?
I love that line with the pond area, who's responsible for coming back for weeds and the grass? And we also have a big plant coming up again, that they're supposed to try to get all of the roots out of it.
So, we can look at that, we did engage the person who did the work on the pond, was, it was also a maintenance contract as well and Mike would be responsible for some of it, but they were responsible for the weeds in the pond. So, we can look at that again and make sure that they're coming to do that soon. Okay. All right. Kathy, can you help me? Get this up? I don't know why it's not up.
Projectors warned. Let's drink them. Which do you mind?
Plug turned on.
Should be coming, I had the first door. Oh, you unplugged.
Oh, I was just moving chairs.
There goes the whole. Blink, you're on, you're on camera.
Me and microphone.
Oh, I think Kathy, it's one of these view things, because it's not showing what it's showing on my screen.
Oh. Do you want to take the view? Is it here? Where's your PowerPoint?
It's coming up.
Okay, go right. Okay, so if I can scale the lights up. My computer's slow. All right, so. Right, and now, it's only here, right?
There it is, got it? All right, whatever you did worked. All right. So, I said at the beginning, it's one of my favorite meetings, because we have the scholarship recipients. Also, a meeting I don't always appreciate, because we talk about rate increases. So, for fiscal year, so when I say fiscal year '24, that means July 1st, 2023, into June 30th, 2024. When I refer to fiscal year '25, that starts July 1st. So, for fiscal year '24, so effective July 1st, monthly service fee increase will be 4.5%. So, and I'll get to a little bit of detail behind that, on how we came to that number. Right now, there's no increase on entrance fees that are being planned. Individual rate letters will be in your mailboxes tomorrow morning, so it goes, you get them every year. So, it talks about your specific increase and what that looks like. And then, I just polled some budget information and there's more detailed budget information, as well as copies of this slide. And I'm also have an email out to get our most recent audited financial statement, so that should be coming soon as well. But it will send a notice for anyone who wants a copy. Okay, so some of the things that went into the 4.5% increase, this is looking at our expenses. So, this is fiscal year '24 expenses as compared to fiscal year '23. So, what we saw this year was a 4.9% increase in salaries and benefits. So, what, a big chunk of that was, we did a minimum wage adjustment for, in this fiscal year. So, it was, and it wasn't just people, we really didn't have anybody who was at minimum wage, but it wasn't just the lowest paying salaries, there was a degree of feathering up that happened, it stopped at a certain point, but it did affect a lot of employees here at Beverwick. So, they were able to benefit from that adjustment. We have a 2% annual increase across the board every year. And then, we just look at various job codes throughout the year. If nobody can hire a dishwasher, then maybe we look at dishwasher codes. If nobody can hire, you know, it's a system-wide process too, so if nobody can hire nurses, maybe we're looking at nurses' salaries. So, that's something they always build into every budget, just to say, it could be any specific job code that we may need to adjust to stay competitive. So, other expenses that we saw, so food, about a 4.7% increase. Increase in insurance costs, 4.9%. Utilities or gas and electric, about 5% increase. Water, sewer, about 3%, grounds was 2%. And then, just general maintenance and repair is 4.5%. Now, there's more, more in there than just this and some of that's listed in the detailed budget information that we have. So, I did wanna talk about capital. So, our, our capital spend fiscal year to date is $817,000 that we spent here just at Beverwick. A lot of that goes into refurbishing apartments, as they, you know, come up for reoccupancy. But, some of the things that affected campus-wide, I did include on here, so we did do sidewalk repairs, paving. We did paving, which was a big, big chunk. AC, you'll see on there a couple of times. The fob system is on there. And then, again, some AC units, we did some renovations to the guest suite. So, those are things that really affected the whole community. We also have, you know, refurbs that we're doing. refurbs that we're doing in occupied apartments. If somebody, their windows aren't working, they need new appliances, it all comes out of this, um, capital fund and that capital spend. So I'm going to talk a little bit about our projected, uh, revenue and our projected expenses, which kind of, um, aligns with the trends that we saw for fiscal year twenty-four. But the occupancy targets are very important in trying to predict how much revenue is coming in. Um, so for independent living, we have, we're projected ninety-four point two percent. Assisted living ninety-five point three, and then for the nursing home, ninety-seven point two. Um, so those are pretty, you know, industry standard, they're above. Uh, I think they're all achievable. I think we should be able to hit that. We pretty much are hitting that now. Um, so, but it takes a lot of hard work to get those, um, targets achieved. And you'll see independent living is slightly lower because the turnover of apartments takes a lot longer. So it could be, you know, anywhere from ninety days, once it vacates till somebody moves in. Usually in the assisted living and the terrace, we can do that and speed that up quicker, so their occupancy is a little bit higher. So this is small, but like I said, you can have copies of this, but our projected income, really the important thing, our income is monthly service fees and entrance fees. That's where our income comes from here in independent living. We do set, have some other miscellaneous, which is revenue we get from guest suites, um, revenue we get from, I'm drawing a blank, where else?
Dining, catering?
Dining, catering, if, um, the country store, housekeeping, all the cards. So all of that kind of goes into that other revenue category. Um, so this, this is just a portion of the balance sheet that we have on the budget, so that, that really is the income portion of it.
But shouldn't there be investment income?
Uh, I did it, well, thinking the investment income may be the, um, entrance fees, but.
No, there's, those fees are invested.
Yes.
So that, those investments presumably are earning some income. Interest, dividends, capital gains.
So the question is about investment income and where is that? I can look and see in the more detailed budgeted if it, if it is in there. Um, it, it, I, I mean, I've seen it in other budgets. I don't have it in this one. And then it's definitely on our audited financial statements, our investment income. This is, this is, um, pulled from the budget that will be submitted with the offering plan. Just so you know where the information's coming from. Um, salaries and benefits, projected expenses, um, throughout the year. Some of these categories we, we touched upon, utilities, water repairs, housekeeping, food services, um, insurance. So management fees, management fees are what we pay, um, to St. Peter's Health Partners. Some of it may be paid to Trinity as well. The management fees are about seven percent. And that is, that covers things like legal services, HR. Beverwick itself does not employ HR. They don't employ lawyers. Um, but they're employed, they're employed at a system level and we pay management fees for those. Marketing materials that we get, um, things like that. So there are several things that go into, um, that management fee that we pay for. Some administrative costs, taxes are on there. Um, so legal fees and audit fees, so that, I, I did say that legal is part of that management fee, but that's our, our lawyers that are, um, employed. These legal fees are what we use for, we have outside, um, lawyers that set up our escrow accounts for, um, prospective residents as well as, um, when we get our audited financial statements as an outside contractor. Yes?
Other is two million. What is other for two million?
So other is, um, resident care activity and they, and, and some of the more detailed information, it describes each of these categories, what is other. Um, so, and it's also money that we put away too, essentially, as well as contingency. And then this, again, it's small, I know. The picture's a little bit bigger, but the numbers are, are kind of there, what the percentages are of what we're spending, um, where, where the money actually goes. So I do, you know, we talked about, um, you know, the capital, the capital that we have, but then we also have in there in expenses, we have, um, you know, repairs, maintenance, so that's in addition to that capital that's spent. Um, you know, capital will be things with a useful life, over five hundred dollars, that's something, that's a capital expense. All, all other expenses, um, fall to that. So in addition to that, um, we have, you know, another six hundred and twenty uh, thousand dollars that we spend on just things that either don't meet that threshold or qualification for capital. Um, but, you know, we do have an aging building, so we do, we do spend a lot on that. So does anybody have any questions on that? Yes, Martha.
We had talked, uh, one or two meetings ago about, um, putting a ramp in the south, far south entrance.
Yes.
Big deal. And I'm, I'm hoping that the Andy put snowball.
Yep, we did get, uh, we do have a quote for the, the railing there. We did have that. I think it came in at like, I don't know, twelve thousand dollars, but yeah, it was more than I anticipated too. I think we got a second one. Uh, but they were both about equal, so yes, we're looking at that. Some of the things that we're looking at for our capital expenditures next year, top of the list is generators. Um, so currently what, where we stand with generators is that we did, I mentioned, we've had a, a generator study that was done, that was presented. Um, the number that they came back with to do, and it didn't include our terrace, but it included our cottages and our independent living, um, to do everything that we wanted it to do with the generators was about two point four million is what they wanted for, um, that. We asked them to relook at it and see if there's anything that, um, we can retool with that quote, um, or to get a little more detail. It also did not include the terrace, so right now our terrace, we have generated power, um, much like we do here in the common areas, the kitchens, the elevator, but it does not, um, include the roofs. So, um, that's a little bit concerning, a little more vulnerable at the, um, at the terrace, more regulated as well. Um, so we're also looking at them to go, um, to take a look at that and see what it would cost to get that up, at least have heat um, in that setting as well. Yes?
What is the current occupancy rate?
Uh, I think we're at, I don't have it. Oh, Kathy, did you write it? You usually do.
I didn't.
I think it's ninety-five, ninety-five percent. Terrace is like ninety-four, nursing home's a hundred. Yes?
Uh, can you tell us how our rate increase compares with the other eddy facilities?
Yes.
Is it comparable across the system?
Um, it is, so Glenett Highland Meadows up in, uh, Queensberry is a little bit different. They have a little bit different owner uh, structure, and they have, but they do their fiscal year January first. Um, they were, I think they were at five this past January. I don't know where they'll be this January. Glen Eddie is four point five percent, we are four point five percent. Um, and, uh, the memory cares were slightly lower. Um, but all of us independent, and then Beachwood is set up a little bit different too, because they're a co-op. So their, their fiscal year runs different than ours as well. The terrace is four point five percent on our campus, and the nursing home again runs January, but they will be, they were four and a half, five, four, four point five percent and will be four point five percent um, January first as well. Yes?
What is the total number of occupants now?
Uh, you know what? I'm not sure offhand. The question was, what's the total number of occupants across campus?
Well, or, or just here?
For independent, I, I would say we're probably about two thirty, two hundred and thirty, yeah. Yes?
Uh, I was looking at the, uh, resident directory this morning and it said two hundred and thirty-nine.
Okay, so two, thank you. I'm glad you took a look at that this morning, two thirty-nine. Yes? Yes?
This is, if all was called St. Peter's Health Partners, but we know it's all Trinity. I mean, all the time it's Trinity. Who sets the rates? Trinity or St. Peter's Health Partners?
Uh, so the question is who sets the rate, St. Peter's Health Partners or Trinity? St. Peter's Health Partners initially, we do, but everything does roll up to Trinity for final approval on budgets. I mean, I don't know that Trinity itself is looking at Beverwick's specific budget. They're looking at probably a more consolidated thing that's presented. I'm not sure how that all rolls up, but Trinity ultimately has final approval. Yes? Yes?
Uh, I keep wondering about, uh, solar panels, Paula, on the south terrace over there. Uh, is that completely out of sight, out of mind, out of consideration?
So
We talked about it before.
We did. So solar panels, but the last thing we looked at was, um, over by the south going towards eighty-five.
Yes.
Uh, that would not be feasible. They said what we could put there would not be enough of what we need to power what we need solar. There are different things we can buy into, and I know we, um, through St. Peter's Health Partners, there is a cost sharing savings that they have, um, with some solar agreements with a solar farm. Um, but I think if we were to do it, that would be the, the route we would go if we wanted to do more specific for Beverwick and with a solar farm not having panels on site.
Why can't it go on the roof?
Um, well, the, it was really, I, I guess that it wasn't well received to go on the roof. Sometimes more issues when you put the panels on. Uh, you know, you're creating more holes in your roof, more chances for things to leak. I know it was an option that was discussed that was dismissed at the time.
What's preventing the decision to opt going, uh, solar sharing?
Like I said, we are, we, we have a small portion of it, and then we could certainly bring it up to, um, you know, e- enter into a contract with a, with a solar farm. The last people we talked to did both. They installed solar panels and could um, get us into what we need for a solar farm. I think if, if that's what we were doing, it wouldn't offset all of our costs, but it could offset a portion of it or offset all of our needs, but certainly a portion and that would help.
Yeah, a little bit, a little is better than nothing.
Yes?
Uh, on that vein, is geothermal, um, a possibility here on campus that would also help to offset some of the utility?
Uh, so I don't know much about geothermal, but, um, I can ask. That was a question, if it's a possibility on this campus. Yes?
Um, several people have been asking about more detail on the changes in the housekeeping staff.
Okay, so the question is changes in the housekeeping staff, just changes of employees?
The supervisor, it's Derek, it's not Dorothy. There's a slide up that says the housekeeping supervisor has changed. It was Derek who left and Ramon got promoted.
Oh.
Not Dorothy.
Okay, so the changes with the housekeeping was, um, Ramon as the supervisor replaced Derek, who's been gone for a while. Um, so, yeah, that, that has been the change. Uh, but as far as number of housekeepers and how we staff housekeeping, that hasn't changed. And actually, housekeeping was an area about a year and a half ago, we had the hardest time with in keeping people, but we are on pretty good ground right now. Um, so Dorothy's doing well with her staff.
Okay, so Dorothy is, will still be Dorothy?
Dorothy is still Dorothy. We are not losing Dorothy. No, no, no. No.
Could you explain the other two items that are on that slide we see posted?
Hannah, Hannah is one. Hannah's leaving.
Oh, so Hannah is our, uh, terrace director. She's our RN down there, who manages the day-to-day at the terrace. She is leaving. Um, her last day is gonna be June, uh, ninth, and then we have a, a new nurse starting. Her name is Mary Ryan.
Megan Ryan.
Megan. I'm gonna call this girl Mary when she starts. I keep, I keep making the same mistake. Megan Ryan. Um, she's coming to us from Skylar Ridge, which is one of our nursing homes. She's been an RN nurse manager there for about twenty-two years. Um, so she'll be coming to the terrace at the end of June.
And the third was the marketing position was eliminated, Lori Schilling.
Okay, and the third was that we had a, um, system, uh, person that was a marketing director, and that position has been eliminated. So she worked, she didn't work for Beverwick. You, I'm not sure you even met her ever, um, but she worked with our sales and marketing team, uh, went across the entire system and worked on, you know, sales initiatives and market of, and marketing initiatives. Um, so we brought that more in-house. The sales team, you know, reports, reports to me and, um, so that position was eliminated. Which is one thing that we, we really do, um, good or bad. Uh, sometimes when we're looking at things and we're looking at these expenses that increase, and this is just a small piece of it here at Beverwick, um, you know, expenses increase everywhere across the board, and it's looking at those positions and can we, um, you know, are, are there's any of those types of positions that, that can be, um, eliminated or paused or, um, you know, whatever we need to do with that. So, I mean, not here at Beverwick. We don't want to lose any employees. None of that has, has been discussed. We don't want to put that out there like it has been. Um, but sometimes we look higher than just at Beverwick. We'll look at system positions and is there anything, um, that can be cut there? Sometimes it might be somebody in the finance office and things that, um, on the day-to-day, you might not notice the difference. Yes?
We had a, a meeting here where we brought people in that we knew that might be interested in coming here. Was there much of a interest that was followed through with from that meeting?
So resident referral event? Um, so we did, uh, we had a resident referral event. Um, I'd like to do that again because I think that's very successful, and actually I just looked at a stat today about, because I do have referral agencies. We don't use them that much at Beverwick. So for example, a place for mom, have you seen those commercials? So a place for mom refers to people who have a signed contract with them. So if Beverwick does not have a signed con, although Beverwick may be the perfect senior living community for them, a place for mom's not gonna send you here. It's only who pays them is where they send them. Now, it's, um, you know, the general public doesn't know that, but, um, it's a necessary evil of kind of being in the business, and that's, that's the way it works. Um, so, but we looked at like a place for mom, and there are several other of them where we can get paid referrals, and the length of stay for the residents coming in on a paid referral was like five hundred days, let's say. And then, um, the length of stay for a resident referral was twenty-seven hundred days. So we kind of just pulled some data together really quick to look at that. So the, the, um, better referrals are coming from you guys, so we would like to, um, continue that, and we look at that when we plan marketing events, and resident referral ones are ones we'd like to do a little bit more of. Um, the last one, we didn't have, um, as much success as I, as I would have liked. Couple reasons for that, um, but we learn to learn and do it better the next time. Yeah.
Is there any plan to resurrect the, the whole patroon club thing?
Uh, good question. So the, the, uh, it was about the patroon club, so the patroon club is for people who, um, are on the waiting list, uh, waiting to move into Beverwick. That's one of the benefits that they get for going on the waiting list is being part of the patroon club, which means they can come for meals, they can come for events. Um, so yes, uh, we were waiting until we opened it up to guests, um, to come in for dining before we opened it up to the patroon club, but that's shortly thereafter. I think we said July first in the last meeting that we had, but that is the plan, to open those benefits back up. Yes?
I don't think I fully understand the, uh, issues with the key fobs, uh, was brought up a little while back. But I'm the new technology person on the committee, and so I should understand it, so. Anyone who knows what, what the issues are with that, if they let me know, I'll do the best I can to work and resolve it.
Okay, um, I think the fobs are a good thing. I think it's gonna increase some security. We know who's coming and going. The, uh, what brought about the necessity of it, we've been looking at it for quite some time, but, uh, our south entrance really is having a ti- a hard time with that master key, and our locksmith said we can't key that to the master anymore, so then it would be, south had one key and north had no key, so it would have been a nightmare, so it was time to just bite the bullet and let's do the fobs. Um, so, um, but as we move forward with it, as being the technology representative on the committee, you'll have your hands full, so. So, thank you for coming aboard. All right, are we ready for a joke?
Yes.
Okay. All right, an elderly woman went to the doctor's office, when the doctor asked her why she was there, she replied, "I need birth control pills." Taken back, the doctor thought for a minute and said, "Excuse me, Mrs. Smith, but you're seventy-two years old. What possibly do you need birth control pills for?" She said, "Well, they help me sleep better." The doctor thought some more and continued, "How in the world would birth control pills help you sleep better?" And she said, "Well, I put them in my granddaughter's orange juice every morning and I sleep better at night." Thank you guys, have a good afternoon.